Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Rocco?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Wadner? His absent Trustee Zora?
Here.
President Tisipio?
Here.
Quorum is present, sir.
Thank you, Amanda. Public participation of agenda-related items only. Would anyone care to address the board? Consent agenda, Amanda?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes, village board meeting, May 23, 2017. Village Board Executive Session, May 23, 2017. Work Session Meeting, June 13, 2017. Village Board Executive Session of June 13, 2017. B, action prevailing wage rate, motion to adopt an ordinance ascertaining prevailing wage rates for construction work in Cook County. C, action funding request, motion to approve funding to Little Grange Park Chamber in the amount of $1,500 for the 2017 haunted trolley event and $300 for the 2017 Holiday in the Park event to help ensure the most enjoyable and orderly community events for our residents and surrounding area visitors. D, action Plymouth Place, amendment to plan unit development 2017-01. Motion to approve an ordinance granting amended final plat of planned unit development for Plymouth Place, 315 North La Grange Road, public hearing 2017-01. E, action FY 2017-18 sewer smoke testing and manhole inspection. Motion to accept the proposal from RJN Group to provide smoke testing and manhole inspections in amount not to exceed $14,975. F, action motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. G, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and July 25, 2017, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on July 25, 2017.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Show moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Village Managers, report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just two items to report this evening. The first item is regarding next month's meeting schedule. As a reminder to the village board that the annual schedule of meetings for this year does not include a work session in May. Instead, we have combined both meetings into one, I'm sorry, July. In July, instead, we have both meetings combined into one for a July board meeting on July 25. This is in order to accommodate the work associated with the village's 125th anniversary birthday party. At the July 25 village board meeting, there will be a special presentation on the water and sewer rate study by the village's consulting firm on this item, which is Baxter Woodman. So they will be providing a presentation. So that meeting will be televised, so folks would be able to watch the presentation of that report from home, from Channel 6. The second item that I have to report is regarding the village's progress on the anniversary birthday party, which takes place on July 15 at Memorial Park. Village staff continues to coordinate logistics with the Community Park District. We had a meeting just recently, and we will have one final meeting on site the Monday before the birthday party, just to ensure that all items are in order for the birthday party. Within the Administration Department report for this evening, there's an update on the birthday party, but there are a couple of additions that I'd like to mention. The first item being that we have recently added a new event at the birthday party, and that would be the Jesse White tumblers. So they have been added to the event, and I'm sure that's going to be very exciting for children and families that come out to the birthday party. And I also wanted to note that there will be other activities included that have been recently scheduled to include bingo tent for folks in the community, a magician, and a balloonist. Again, we're trying to make this a family fun event and free for kids and families. So we look forward to seeing the residents at this birthday party on July 15. And with that, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Julia. And please convey to Deanne and everyone involved the wonderful work and excellent results that they're receiving from all the donations and all the participation by all the committees. Job well done. Administration Committee, Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Village stickers and dog licenses are required by July 31. Residents are reminded that the village vehicle stickers and dog licenses must be purchased and displayed prior to midnight on July 31, 2017. Renewal applications were mailed to each home in early June. To renew your license, please correct any incorrect pre-printed information on your renewal application and return it with payment to the village hall for processing. If you have not received a renewal application, blank forms are available at the village hall. Vehicle stickers may be purchased at the village hall during regular business hours or purchased online from the village's website at www.lagrangepark.org. As village manager Sadio touched upon, the 125th anniversary celebration. Come celebrate with us on July 15. As the village and Community Park District throw a village-wide birthday party in honor of our 125th anniversary. We invite you to grab your picnic baskets, blanket, and come join us at the newly renovated Memorial Park for food, crafts, activities, and live music. From noon to 5:00, bring the youngsters and enjoy a variety of free attractions and entertainment. There will be several inflatable attractions, including a 28-foot jump slide, as well as food trucks and a beer truck. At 5:00 PM, please join us at the amphitheater for a ribbon-cutting ceremony to unveil the new improvements at Memorial Park. Eat some birthday cake and view the special gift the seniors of Plymouth Place are giving the village. Afterwards, find a cozy spot on the grass and finish the evening by listening to some great music with friends and family. All these great activities are being brought to you by the Quasicentennial Committee through the generous donations of local businesses, vendors, and residents. The village extends our appreciation to all of our donors. That concludes the administration report for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Building and zoning committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items to report on the building department from May 2017. Ninety-four building permits were issued in May compared to 103 last May. Permits issued year-to-date remain somewhat less as compared to this point last year. We're now at 329 permits being issued so far this calendar year, and last year at this time, we issued 346. Estimated construction costs for the month were slightly lower from last May, but permit fees collected were somewhat up. This is usually a result of the type of permits issued. 125 inspections were conducted in May compared to 146 in May of 2016. Five were not approved. 614 inspections have been conducted, which is still slightly more than at this point last year. Staff met with the Park District's Executive Director to discuss plans for the village birthday party. A portion of the discussion focused on what areas of the renovation will most likely be complete by the time of the celebration and how to handle some areas that will not be complete in regards to safety. Staff fielded various questions and discussed various proposals for the potential new restaurant to be located in the 1,000 block of 31st Street. Staff met with representatives of School District 95 to have preliminary discussions regarding their proposed additions at Brook Park School and discuss village requirements. Construction will tentatively begin in spring of 2018. Staff worked through various issues related to the Congregation of St. Joseph Project, including developing contingency plans for supplying water to the sand pipes and fire sprinkler system while the fire pump and fire protection water supply were relocated. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Zora.
Thank you.
Engineering Capital Projects, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items to report on this evening. The first item is Davis Concrete began work on the 2017 street paving program, West Section. The curb gutter and driveways were removed and replaced on the 600 block of Park Avenue, 900 block of Oak Avenue, 700, 800, 900 blocks of Stone Avenue, 900 block of Loyola Avenue, and the 800 and 900 block of Spring Avenue. Once Park Junior High is out of session for the summer, the contractor will commence work on the 300 block of Brainerd Avenue. The repaving of these streets is expected to be completed by mid-August with final restoration completed in early fall. Second item, K-5 Construction has initiated work on the 2017 street paving program, North Section. Their work started on the 500 and 600 blocks of Barnesdale Road with designated curb gutter and driveway aprons being removed and replaced. Once Barnesdale Road School is out of session for the summer, the contractor will proceed with the work in front of the school entrance with repaving completed prior to mid-August. Final restoration will be done when weather conditions moderate in the early fall. Final item, Suburban General Construction Company has completed all pipe replacements identified in the 2017 sewer repair program. Project closeout by various permitting agencies has been initiated. And if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to make one comment. The streets in the area where I live are currently being worked on by K-5, and I've had a number of comments by neighbors saying how professional and how good the work has been done. So kudos to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Trustee Casera. Okay, public safety, Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Monthly report is police summary of activities for May of this year. Total number of crimes reported is lower from last year, with 78 reported this year compared to 189, or I mean, 108 during the same timeframe last year. Overall, police services and assistance is similar to last year with 2,643 incidents reported through May of this year as compared to 2,800 last year. Note, approximately 328 incidences were reported prior to March 20, 2017, and those are not part of the new CAD breakdown report. A very successful bike auction was held on Saturday, June 24. Many persons were able to receive the bike they desired. Also, police staff was able to register all bikes that were sold to assist with the security of their new property. Please remember to register your bike if you are a resident of La Grange Park for free at the police department, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Police secure all property at all times, and please be aware of the many phone scams that are presently occurring for donations or other business affiliates that are requesting money be sent through Western Union or other payment firms for invalid reasons. You may just hang up or report them to the police department at any time, especially if you are a victim of a dollar loss. Upcoming Police Department special events, Tuesday, August 1, at 7:00 to 10:00 PM, the annual crime prevention event of the National Night Out at Memorial Park will take place. Also, session two of the Police Citizen Academy on Thursdays, 6:30 to 8:30 PM, will occur from September 14 through October 12. You must register, and it's limited to the first 20 persons of 18 years of age and over. That concludes the Police Department report. And now on to the Fire Department activities for May of 2017. EMS responses for this month were 144. There have been 713 year-to-date compared to 698 year-to-date last year. Fire rescue incidents this month, 46. There have been 203 year-to-date compared to 184 in the same timeframe of last year. Staff conducted our initial print review for the new quint ladder truck at Pierce Manufacturing. Revisions will be made, and updated prints should be available for review by the end of June. Personnel were trained on the operation of one of our new power-operated stretchers. At one of the Citizens Police Academy sessions, Fire Department staff provided an overview of EMS and Fire Department operations and equipment, demonstrating some of our newest equipment. Staff were recognized at the Loyola EMS Systems Annual Recognition Event for the care and expedient transport provided to a patient severely injured in a motorcycle accident this past year. Fire and EMS personnel participated in a number of events this month, standing by at the Run for the Roses, providing EMS coverage for and participating in live fire training exercise, and participating in MABUS Division 10 Hazard Material Response Team Incident Drill. The Fire Department Instructors Conference International in Indianapolis this month and was attended by a couple of our personnel. There are a number of great classes, a large exhibition, and many other fire service activities. This year, there were 33,979 attendees from 58 countries and 798 exhibitors. And that concludes the Public Safety Committee report, and there are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following is a report for Public Works for May 2017. Public Works operations are as follows. The street sweeper spent 85 and 1/2 hours cleaning 228 miles of village streets and picked up 68 yards of debris. Brush pickup took place the first full week of May. 216 day shift hours were used making several passes through town, removing approximately 270 yards of brush from the parkways. Tree maintenance, trimming, and inspections was performed during 74 regular hours along with the planting of six trees. 58 day shift hours were spent filling remaining tree stump holes with dirt and grass seed. 151 and 1/2 regular hours were spent on the maintenance of public works equipment and vehicles. 77 hours were spent filling potholes with approximately 20 tons of asphalt being used. 119 day shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the public works facility, the village hall, and along 31st Street. Barricades were put out for three-block parties. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concerns. Water Department operations, over 378 day shift hours and 30 overtime man-hours during the month of May, were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 28,420,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,479 water meters were read in Section 2. 52 monthly accounts and 19 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Seven water sewer inspections, seven meter appointments, and 32 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. All samples passed. 231 utility locations were identified prior to excavation. Two service lines were repaired, and eight valve boxes were repaired. And following up on Trustee Casera's comment about our subdivision by practically neighbors, I expressed to Director McLaughlin tonight and Engineer Flood many compliments received about the, A, the workmanship that K-5 is providing, and I myself have noticed that the semi-trucks, the 18-wheelers that are going back and forth are adhering to the speed limit, and there's a lot of kids out there. That's been brought to my attention, that they were happy that the village is using such a good contractor. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Finance Committee, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a report, and it's for the first month of the fiscal year. The fiscal year-to-date, the general revenue fund is at 6% of the annual budget and annually flat compared to last year. The sales tax receipts are about 9% higher than last year, while telecommunications taxes are down by 12%. Charges for services are up about $15,000 due to increased ambulance fee receipts. Fine revenue is lower than last year, but it's above budget. Miscellaneous revenue is higher, due in part to contributions associated with the village's anniversary. The total fund expenditures are within expectations at 8% of the annual budget and about $172,000 above last year. Most of the increase is due to the new LTAC annual contribution, which is paid on a quarterly basis beginning in May from the police and fire department budgets. That concludes my report, and nothing, no action items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. Commercial revitalization committee, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very excited to see that we're looking into the next phases of our TIF districts as well as Business Development Districts. Assistant Manager Rodman worked with the village's special counsel, Kathleen Orr, to prepare an application packet for individuals or businesses interested in applying for tax increments financing, TIF, funding. The packet is attached and is available on the village website. Staff is currently drafting a similar packet for the Business Development District applications. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Other reports, village clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer? Our village engineer? And our village attorney?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Motion to approve Committee and Collectors' reports?
Show moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next Sustainability Commission, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have one action item, and it's the solar energy rebate program. The Sustainability Commission has recommended that the village board consider rebating building permit fees in an effort to support solar energy projects in La Grange Park. Background is, in April, the village board work session, this idea was presented, and there was discussion related to the general support of solar projects tempered by the potential revenue impacts that could occur to the village. The village board referred the matter back to the village staff and asked them to return with a policy recommendation for the village board to consider. Staff discussed the idea of incentives and recognizes that in the scope of cost to install solar panels, the permitting fees are by far small cost compared to purchase and installation of solar panels. As there have only been two residential installation of solar panels, it is unlikely that any incentive relating to permit fees would have a significant impact on the total budget for the village. In both cases, the total permit fees were less than $500 each. Should a non-residential property choose to install solar panels, staff would suggest a 50% rebate, as it may be more complicated than the residential solar panel systems that have been installed so far. So staff recommends that the board authorize a policy that would rebate 100% of building permit fees for the installation of residential solar energy systems and 50% of the building permit fees for non-residential solar energy systems. I move to, does this need to be two separate motions, or can this all be one motion together? Okay, thank you. So my first motion is I move to authorize a policy that would rebate 100% of a building permit fees for the installation of residential solar energy systems.
Second.
Motion is second. Trustee Rocco?
Well, this is a great idea, Mr. President. In our package, we got details regarding, you know, how much we're getting for the whole total project, because, you know, we're still getting permit fees from the project, the person, the resident who's doing the building. We're just, the rebate we're only giving them is the portion that deals with the solar panels, so that's why it's a lower impact, but yet, in terms of our budget, but yet, it's a great incentive for our residents to promote the use of solar panels. So I absolutely recommend this, and thank you for bringing this. I, you know, thank the Sustainability Commission for bringing this to our attention and for staff for working on this.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. Any other comments from the board? Seeing, Amanda, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
My second motion is I move to authorize a policy that would rebate 50% of building permit fees for non-residential solar energy systems.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Trustee Rocco?
Once again, for the reasons that I've previously stated, it's a great idea. It makes sense that because it's more complicated than a commercial deal, that we have it 50% as opposed to 100%. I support it.
Any other comments? Amanda, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President, and nothing else to report.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. Okay, village president, I have two items. One is the Proviso Municipal League has their golf outing on July 12. It's not at Fresh Meadows this year, it's out in Bensonville. If any of the trustees would want to participate, just let Julia or myself know, and we'll certainly send that in. I think we need to know as soon as you can, like, this week. So if anyone's interested, just let me know, and we'll get you on. My second item is, on Friday, Julia and our lobbyist Chris Ganshow and myself met, and we were discussing the state, the budget, the impact it may have on our community, and we felt it was a good idea to generate a letter that would be sent to the governor and to legislative leaders in our state. So really, the hallmark of this, what I'm going to read, this document, is by lobbyist Chris Ganshow and Julia Sadio. You know, they're down there, this is the week that something should get done, if anything, but we wanted to be at least known to at least get the word out. So if I may read. Dear Governor and legislative leaders, on behalf of the village of La Grange Park, I am writing to you to express opposition to legislation that would imperil our ability to provide services, especially emergency services, in our community. We are especially concerned about Senate Bill 2217, which would slash payments of the local government distributive fund by 10% beginning in July. Furthermore, we have deep concern regarding a provision in that bill that would take this crucial source of revenue to local communities off an automatic appropriation, subjecting LGDF to the vigories of the annual budget process. The LGDF was originally intended to be a full 10% of income tax collections, but has fallen to about 8% in recent years. Municipalities cannot afford a further erosion of the LGDF without imperiling critical services for our residents such as police and fire protection. We are opposed to House Bill 2217 or any legislation that would cut the LGD off and/or take it off an automatic appropriation. Senate Bill 2217 is also problematic in that it would empower the state to take a 2% administrative fee for collecting and distributing sales tax owed to local governments. This new fee could add up to more than $70 million in lost revenue for local governments. These revenues are already experiencing significant decline. We strongly oppose any legislation that would erode local sales tax revenues. Senate Bill 2214 would also be a problem for local communities, as it includes yet another sweep of corporate personal property replacement tax funds earmarked for local governments. After the $100 million diversion of CPRT funds last year, municipalities cannot afford to have Springfield strip away any more of this crucial funding source, and so we are opposed to Senate Bill 2214 or any attempt to do so. Finally, we are opposed to House Bill 4066, the four-year property tax freeze. This legislation would severely hamstring local communities' ability to respond to the impending fiscal challenges, especially because it does not exempt ever increasing pension payments and public safety expenses. Senate Bill 484, House Committee Amendment 1, is also of great concern, although it does not allow for an exemption for pension payments. In addition, we want to convey our support for Senate Bill 1839, the extension of the Telecommunications Acts passed in May. This bill, which received broad bipartisan backing in both the House and the Senate, would secure the financial resources necessary to provide 911 services to residents across Illinois. The Telecommunications Act of 2015 mandated statewide 911, including consolidation, and eliminated our ability to tax to sufficiently fund it. There needs to be more funding to pay for this highly necessary and highly desirable public safety service. Thank you in advance for your consideration. So again, this is something we felt we should do to get out there. I know that the West Central Municipal Conference has also drafted a letter, so we hope that they get on the desks of our legislators and our governor tomorrow. I don't have any other further business, any public participation of non-agenda-related items? Any new business? Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Should I go there, or is it good here? I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the residents who reached out to support my actions, I guess, at the last work session, and thank you for your support. I also just want to point out that anyone who is interested in taking further action, there are residents who are interested, whether they're looking at a referendum for the 2018 ballot. If you are interested, I don't know if I can use my email address for the village, or if I should give my personal, doesn't matter.
It's not village business, so...
Okay, so if you would like to find out, there's a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. You can patraco29@comcast.net. If you want to email me, I'll be happy to forward your information to the person who's holding the meeting. I didn't get her permission before tonight's meeting, so I'm feeling uncomfortable to divulge, but I'm happy to reach out if you're interested in finding out what steps residents are taking. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. I didn't know the content of your message. I may, probably would have asked you to step down, but that's okay.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't...
We're down. Any other comments? Motion to move to executive session. Trustee Rocco, I'm sorry.
New business? I just wanted to raise one thing on a new business.
Sure.
Okay. And I know we've addressed this before, and so this may not even, it may not kind of be moot, or it's not, we don't know, it's not timely, but I wasn't sure if it's a time for us to revisit. Somebody reached out to me regarding clean choice energy, and I wasn't sure if it was time for us to revisit the possibility of looking at other sources for electricity service.
Julia?
I know we opted, we were in for a while, and then we took out because it was not to our advantage. I wasn't sure if we should be revisiting.
We received some feedback from a resident on the suggestion of clean choice energy as a promotion for, as an alternate...
on the suggestion of clean choice energy as a promotion for, as an alternate source of energy that residents can take advantage of. Some of the feedback that we received from a resident, we forwarded to the Sustainability Commission, and my understanding from talking with Brendan is that group had some discussion on this topic and whether or not they might look to possibly, looking into whether or not we want to revisit aggregation once again, if there's a value to it, or whether or not just to promote alternative energy sources for residents and promote that in some of our publications. So I believe that the commission is looking at that, and if Brendan would like to add anything further to that, because I was not at the meeting, but I know that the discussion took place, he can do that.
Brendan?
I was just going to say that the commission did have a long discussion based on the residents' email. They did feel that they want to go back to the consultant for the village to see if it was appropriate timing-wise to go back to the market if it would be valuable for the rest of the residents in savings. Pending an answer on that, they also thought if we were not going to go out in the near term that putting public relations materials like they did previously, the website used to have a list of energy providers and the amount of green power that they offer. And so the Sustainability Commission wanted to find those sources on the internet again and then provide those to residents. Again, if aggregation isn't occurring in the near term for the village, they can at least get the information out for those people that are interested in being more sustainable to look at using some of those vendors.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Sounds like we all got the same email. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Satisfy your question, trustee Rocco? Okay. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Julia. Okay, next, executive session. Motion to move into executive session?
I make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose to discuss the following. The selection of a person to fill a village commission committee according to 5 ILCS 120/2C3 and 2, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, 5 ILC 120/2C1, not to return to open session until our next regularly scheduled meeting on July 25th.
A motion, a second?
Second.
Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll move into executive session.